Hi, I'm Julie Thompson. Welcome to the Plymouth Select Board Candidate Interview. I want to take a moment to thank the candidates for participating in this interview and collaborating with PAC TV to bring this informational programming to residents and voters this election season. Let me explain the format. We will be conducting a one-on-one interview-style Q&amp;A format with each candidate lasting about 30 minutes. Responses will not be timed, and follow-up questions may be asked during this format. We aim to ask up to about five questions, but that will depend on the length of the responses, along with any follow-up discussion during this exchange. Candidates will be allowed to address anything not covered, or that they would like to add clarification to at the end of the interview in their closing remarks. Let's get started. Welcome Scott Vekki. You're one of four candidates running for the Plymouth Select Board. I'm going to get right into the questions. What is your motivation for running for this position right now? Especially when you would have to run again in the spring if you are elected. And secondarily, what is your defined role as a Select Board member? Do you know what it is? There seems to be some confusion about what the Select Board is actually supposed to do. So it's a two-part question.
My motivation for running for Select Board is, believe it or not, I'm a very altruistic person. And sometimes to my own detriment. When Sheila Joyce resigned, the next day my phone began blowing up with people saying, "Scott, you're a viable candidate for the seat." Everybody knows that the best seat to run for is an open seat. You know, I thought about it. I had some other things going on in my life that I had to organize. Hence why I didn't, you know, come out right away. There was a lot of, you know, introspection, reflection, determine the viability of the campaign. But at the end of the day, you know, I've been on the last Charter Commission, I'm sorry, the last Charter Committee, and I was recently elected to the Charter Commission. And the results of that election, I put up selectmen-level numbers. I was actually very surprised and very pleased that the voters of Plymouth have that much confidence in me. I came out of nine, I was the third highest vote getter for the Charter Commission. And my numbers were comparable to Ken Tavarez, although his bid was unsuccessful. The fact that I put up such good numbers in that town election, and that the voters had that much confidence in me drove me to seek out the seat of Select Board. You know, I've been very involved in town politics. You know, I've been an elected town meeting member. I was on the last Charter Committee, which was appointed. We made a lot of recommendations. That was only advisory. When we went to town meeting, you know, a lot of what I felt were the more important changes to our charter were voted down at town meeting. I am appointed to the Historic District Commission, which I enjoy very much. Having been born and raised in Plymouth, I'm a descendant of the Pilgrims. I'm actually a member of the Mayflower and Alton Societies. So Plymouth and its history are very, very special to me. I've also, when we talk about open seats, I saw an open seat on the Redevelopment Authority. And I did a write-in campaign for the Redevelopment Authority about a year ago. And I was, I put up, I think it was 219 write-in votes, which again was very surprising because I think I needed 21 to win. But just that the town of Plymouth have had so much confidence in me recently. Prior to that, I had kind of focused at the county level. And the reason being is because I was wary of some of the conflicts, you know, with me being a police officer in the town of Plymouth and being a town employee. You know, there's a lot of issues that I tried to avoid by kind of, you know, staying at the county level. But when I focused local, because all politics is local. You know, the residents of Plymouth have had so much confidence in me and my abilities. As far as the second part of your question, the Select Board is the executive branch of our government. They're the part of the government that drives our policy, that drives our, you know, which way the town is heading, keep making sure that, you know, our town is focused on the needs of its citizens. You know, as the executive branch, their responsibility is true to the voters and to the citizens, you know, to set that policy, to keep us on track, to make sure that our budget is spent frugally and wisely, that we are aware of the, that it's not the town's money. It's the citizens' money that is collected in taxes and derivatives. So with that significant responsibility to them, you know, as the executive branch, you know, it's a very, very important role in the town of Plymouth. And, you know, a lot of people, you know, get confused with the different roles, with executive, legislative, and all that other stuff. Actually, one of my favorite classes in law school was constitutional law. And the reason why, because the first thing they did was explain how our form of government works, and what all the branches do, and what all their responsibilities are. And, you know, a lot of my, they struggled through that one year of constitutional law, but I loved it, I thrived in it. And, you know, like I said, I'm a very altruistic person, you know, I'm not, there's no compensation for what I'm doing, but I'm very actively involved in the town. And, you know, like I said, in the last two elections that I've done extremely well, I was actually kind of in awe that the citizens of the town of Plymouth had that much confidence in me as a person to elect me twice to different roles.
All right. Then let's go to question number two. Plymouth is the largest town by land area in the state using one of the oldest forms of town government in the country. In your opinion, has Plymouth outgrown the town meeting form of government?
You know, as somebody who was a town meeting member, you know, I love town meeting. I think that my favorite part was, I used to like to sit with all the older folks because they had the institutional and historic knowledge of our town, and of different things that had occurred in past town meetings. And, you know, for that aspect, it was, it was a lot of, I found it enjoyable. I know, you know, people think politics is boring and dull. But, you know, I'm one of those strange people that finds it enjoyable to learn about what has taken place in the past and why our government works this way. You know, that being said, I never want to see Plymouth not be America's hometown. However, in one of the first Charter Commission meetings, we said, you know, "What type of government do you see us having?" And, you know, my answer was that we need full-time government, you know. And we're still hashing that out. I'm actually, I should be in a Charter Commission meeting right now, hence why we're here on Zoom. But I strongly believe that no matter what the executive branch is, whether it's, you know, five members of a Select Board, three members of a Select Board, I'm very doubtful that we're going to go to, you know, a mayor as our executive branch. That we need full-time executive branch people in our government that's responsible to the voters on a daily basis. That being said, town meeting, the pandemic showed us that as much as I love town meeting, you know, we didn't have a town meeting until August because of the pandemic. Because a lot of people weren't comfortable on Zoom. Again, like I said earlier, one of the best things about the pandemic for me was that Zoom's socially acceptable. And while I'm here on Zoom with you, it makes it easier for me to go to another meeting, to be in another place, not, you know, that I can't get over to the studios to do this tonight.
Right.
But the number, we're actually going to increase by at least two precincts. When the census, when the last census makes it all the way down to the town of Plymouth, you're going to see us, right now we're listed at 65,000 people. I think you're going to see us a lot closer to 80,000.
Yeah. That's a number I've heard too.
With that, and having only two town meetings per year isn't adequate. So, you know, my proposal was a very slim downtown meeting. That we find those people, you know, that, you know, I consider myself to be a very altruistic and driven person. You know, some of the precincts are having difficulty filling all of their seats.
Right.
So if we slimmed town meeting down, and, you know, the numbers were, you know, were five, one person said five, one person said three, you know, I said, "Go to two." You know, go to two elected members from each precinct, and then have, you know, an increased frequency. If it's only two, then those will be the people that are driven. Those will be the people that are involved. You know, some of these people that are on these committees, you know, and are elected to different positions should have parking spaces outside its town hall.
Yeah.
I mean, right now I'm elected to two different things, and I'm appointed to one. And, you know, so I spend, you know, this Historic District meets every other week, Redevelopment meets once a month, Charter Commission meets twice a month. I'm at town hall. So that's the kind of person that I want to elect to represent my precinct.
Now, let me ask you something. Can I ask you a follow-up on this? Where town meeting members obviously have to learn about what they're, or should learn about everything that they're going to be voting on, and then they vote. Why is the general public, the voting block, so low in Plymouth? Why is there such a low turnout?
Well, that's actually been a topic over our, the last few Charter Commission meetings. And part of it, you know, I'd just finish up that last part, which is, you know, I would like to see, you know, whether it's two or three elected per precinct, and then have them meet monthly. And out of those, out of that group, you know, instead of FinCom, actually have a Ways and Means Committee. So that the people that, the other town meeting members, or if they change the name to something, a council, or whatever you want to call it, doesn't really matter. That those are the people that also are so educated on what's going on in the budget, that they fill in the rest of the members, and even as frequently as monthly meetings. So the other part of, like I said, we were discussing at our last Charter Commission meetings, where how do we get the vote turnout higher? And the answer that has come out of it is, is May elections are, if you're, if you adopt a town form of government, you have to have your elections in May. And that has historically been, is because it's May, it's not in line with all the other, you know, federal and, you know, state reps and all that other stuff, which always vote in November. So really, the only way for us to shift from voting to May to voting in November, which you're actually seeing probably a 26% to 30% turnout.
Yeah.
Which I think, you know, our last one was, I think our last one was somewhere around 13. So to that, you have to adopt some type, and I'm not saying a mayoral and city council, but some type of a city-like government in order to shift your elections to November. And if you shift your elections to November, then you will at least double your turnout.
Right. Okay, thank you. Let's go to question number three. Although not specifically under the purview of the Select Board, what is your opinion on the tax burden placed on residents for maintaining services and infrastructure versus increased commercial economic development? Also, including your answer, something about open space versus developed land, and a separate possible tax rate for commercial and residential?
As a taxpayer myself, you know, I do feel the crunch on our property taxes, our excise taxes, and all that other stuff. I actually had to take a trip to Hoben and Hoben because I forgot to pay the town $18 to get it, so I could get my Jeep sticker, because I want to get a four-by-four sticker on my Jeep. So there is a big burden on our taxpayers. I did pay my excise tax, and I'm up to speed now, but hopefully I'll have a four-by-four sticker soon. But, you know, the burden on our taxpayers, it's very tough, especially for the people struggling, you know, in this post-COVID world. There's a lot of people that are still affected. A lot of your hospitality workers that were very, you know, heavily impacted by COVID are struggling under our tax burden. And as far as I know, I'm the only one who's come out with a proposed new revenue stream for the town. I just unveiled today a proposal that the Plymouth Fire Department take over the ambulance service for the town. And my research on that, because what that would do is if the fire department assumed responsibility for the ambulance, like most surrounding towns do, they all use a billing firm, and the firm bills mass health or insurance. And in a conservative estimate of my research, that would bring in $3 million a year. The outlay that I was, you know, on Facebook today was $3.5 million for equipment that would fund, I talked to the ambulance company, got an idea of how much a fully stocked ambulance costs and all that. For four advanced life support ambulances and four basic life support ambulances, the basic ones are the smaller van-like ones, that would run about $300, I'm sorry, about $3 million. But what that would do, that would double our ambulance coverage in town. Right now, we have four ALS ambulances operated by Brewster, and if we need additional BLS, they divert them from somewhere else. So in addition to doubling our ambulance coverage by billing everybody's insurance, that would bring in conservatively $3 million a year. So you would repay that out, the cost for the equipment and the cost for training in about two years. And then after that two-year mark, the town would be bringing in a long-term revenue stream. And that would continue for as long as we ran. So as far as I know, I'm the only candidate that has proposed any kind of a revenue stream. And I haven't really seen too many revenue streams proposed since we lost all the funding from the nuclear plant.
Well, let me ask you then, what is your feeling about commercial development versus open space? And what type of commercial development do you think is appropriate?
I, you know, I think that we definitely need to pursue additional commercial development. I know one of the other candidates has proposed, you know, raising the heights requirements and stuff like that. We definitely need to try and attract as much commercial development as we can. I actually, well, I'm really operating at this time. I owned a small business in the town of Plymouth. And owning and operating a small business is an extremely difficult task. Sadly, I owned and operated Mayflower Taxi. Plymouth Transportation was the parent corporation, excuse me. And, you know, due to COVID, I had to shutter. And it was heartbreaking to see my business that I had run for 11 years shutter because of that. So, you know, I empathize a lot of the people, with a lot of people who were drastically impacted by COVID. You know, I'd love to get that business run up and running again. You know, right now it just doesn't seem to be feasible. We need to get all the way through the pandemic and all, you know, the outlying fallout of how we go back to this new normal. But we definitely need to attract as much commercial development as we can. But at the same time, we would need to do it smartly, and we need to do it with proper zoning. Because we don't want to, we don't want to put a high rise across on the Mayflower. We want to maintain our carrot town of Plymouth. We want to maintain that. And like, being on the Historic District is a lot of fun for me. You know, I lived downtown in the 70s, back when if you walked through the center of town, you knew everybody you saw, or you knew somebody in their favor. You know, who used to get me in trouble all the time when I was a little kid? The mailman. The mailman, the mailman was friends with my dad. My dad was a cop who walked the beat downtown, and the mailman would tell on me all the time. So my dad had a full report of everything I did. But that was small-town Plymouth.
Yeah.
And while we're not small-town Plymouth anymore, we don't want to lose that character. We don't want to lose the character of, you know, our tourism base. Because way back then, in the 70s and early 80s, when I was a kid, you know, that was the basis, you know, of our economy, aside from the nuclear plant. The nuclear plant fed the town for years.
Right.
And now, you know, that revenue stream is gone, we're struggling. We're struggling very hard to make up for that revenue. But we do need to attract commercial, but we need to do it smart with proper zoning. And we need to keep, you know, the character of America's hometown intact.
You mentioned, you'd mentioned the ambulance service becoming Plymouth's own, and therefore bringing in about $3 million a year after the initial startup costs. But $3 million is not, is kind of a drop in the bucket compared to what the town actually needs for the tax base. What other, what other things can happen to bring more taxes, less taxes on the individuals and more to the corporate end?
But it may be a drop in the bucket, but it's also about 20% of the fire department's budget. One of the other proposals that I put was the aggressive adoption of solar and hydropower for the town. And, you know, I'm a huge solar advocate, I'm a huge green energy advocate. My last house, which sadly, when I got divorced, I, you know, we had to sell, I had solar panels on my roof. I had a really nice, you know, array up on my roof. And every day I would go look at my computer to see how much clean energy we had generated that day. So when we're proposing new buildings, like, obviously, you know, central fires, you know, that's on borrowed time as it is, it's going to need to be replaced. So when we replace these buildings, or we're renovating some of these other sick firehouses, adopting clean green energy and putting, you know, solar arrays somewhere, no, I don't want to cut trees to do it. You know, I like the ground-mounted arrays that are positioned in a way where as they, they're not an eyesore. But at the same time, they're not, you know, if we need to replace the roof, or we need to fix a roof on the, a leak in the roof, we don't have to rip the whole thing down.
Right.
Because that, I mean, that's the gist of that, is if there's a problem with the roof, like we saw at South High before they had to rip South High down, then you're dealt with that additional cost of taking this whole array down. But, you know, when we replace central fire, somewhere, you know, in an already cleared part of that lot, putting a solar array up to help lower the electrical costs. There's so many town buildings, and the electricity in them runs 24/7, whether it's the fire stations, whether it's the, even the schools, you know, draw electricity at night and during the summer. If we can find places, you know, like I said, that the low-impact, that are properly, you know, I'm trying to think of the word, they're not an eyesore, you know, and they don't disturb the neighbors. And, you know, and it has input into, hey, look, this is what we want to do, this is where we want to put it.
Yep.
But that's another way where I propose to reduce the burden on the taxpayers by lowering our electric bills.
Is, let me ask you one other thing on taxes. Do you see any place in the future where the corporate tax rate would be different than the individual's tax rate?
I mean, that's definitely something that we really need to look at. And like I said, we want to be careful. If we're going to do that, we need to be smart about it. Because when you go with a blanket corporate tax, Scott Vekki is a corporation. Not Scott Vekki, but actually Plymouth Transportation Incorporated is a corporation. And right now I own me and one cab that I hope to get running again, and an office in Camelot Park. So we need to be careful, we need to be smart about it. If we're going to adopt a corporate tax rate, we want to make sure that we don't crush these small businesses, especially the people in the hospitality industry that are struggling to recover. You know, I love the outside seating downtown. You know, that's allowed some of these small businesses to survive and not shutter because of the pandemic. But like I said, all of the people down there that are struggling still are corporations. So we want to be smart in how we do a separate corporate rate. And that's something we've really, you know, like, I believe in it. But it has to be done smart, and it has to be studied so we don't have unintended consequences of bringing our small businesses.
Okay, gotcha. Next question. Given society's thirst for instantaneous information and responses, what is your opinion about the use of social media by any department or board or committee for the purpose of dispersing or collecting information or opinions? What do you see as advantages or disadvantages of using social media?
I think social media has become part of the new norm. And I think that it can be very advantageous, but at the same time, it can be very disadvantageous. We have to be very careful of the message that's sent, especially if it's coming from, you know, one member of the town, or one member of a board, or committee, or stuff. Everybody has to be on the same message so that the citizens aren't receiving conflicting information about what the town is trying to do. You know, personally, you know, I think it's great, especially when, you know, if you go back to the summer before last, which was the summer of road construction, you know, social media, you know, was the times you alert people like, "Hey, don't go on Aubrey Street today because we're paving it." Or, you know, "We're grinding Sandwich Street at JB's Corner." There were times where social media had been used in that aspect. And there's times where, you know, it's very, like right now, we're on Zoom. And Zoom is an outcropping of social media. You know, people are very adept at computers now. And again, the problem with instantaneous gratification is that sometimes on social media, you know, people say things that they wouldn't say in person. So that's something else that we, you know, you're going to pull this. Some of my posts on my Select Board page have devolved into infighting within the comments and stuff like that. So if you're going to use it smart, it has to be used controlled, and, you know, it has to be on message. But I do think that, because even the young people aren't on Facebook anymore. If you're not on Instagram, Snapchat, or one of these new platforms, even Twitter, people know.
Right.
And I consider myself a person, I'm sorry.
What do you think the most effective way for boards and committees is to communicate with the public? Since clearly the public is not as engaged as we want them to be, and you can tell that by how many people came out to vote?
That's also been, I'm sorry, stutter a little bit, but that's also been a hot topic of debate at the Charter Commission. Is, you know, as we review our charter, and for those who don't know, the charter sets out how our government operates, and what will interact, and what ways. And one of the things that's consistently come up, aside from transparency, people want transparent government, which I am strongly in favor of it. But they also want to be informed. So social, it does help do that. Even websites are, you know, 20 years ago technology. People aren't going to websites unless they're buying stuff. You know, as far as the websites for information, they'll Google it. And, you know, just because it's on Wikipedia doesn't mean it's right. You know, I could go on and make myself the president tomorrow on Wikipedia, and it'd take them two or three days to fix it. But again, like I said, social media and those outlets are valuable tools. As long as, you know, what's being distributed is on message and it's clear, and it doesn't devolve into, you know, some type of inviting in the comments section and such.
Okay. Is there a question or a topic that we have not covered today that you feel passionate about that you want to really talk about right now?
You know, we briefly talked about my proposal that, you know, that the town adopts the ambulance service and does that. That's just one example of a revenue stream. And that's one of the things that we need to do, is if we're going to take the burden off the taxpayers. You know, and I, as a taxpayer myself, and again, I had to downsize recently, and I'm in a condo instead of my nice huge house that I loved so much. But I was paying a lot of taxes on that big house. It was 3,000 square feet on three acres. So I felt pinched. And, you know, our elected officials, especially our Select Board, they need to be very cognizant of the fact that what they're operating with is not the town's money. The town has no money. The town only has what the citizens give it. And that is an important charge. And you, like I said, it's not a blank checkbook. It's not like, "Hey, I got a great idea, let's spend a bunch of money." You need to be cognizant of the fact is, is these people have finite resources, especially post-COVID, where people are struggling. And so if there's one thing that I'm passionate about, it's the taxpayers' money. And being aware of that that money belongs to the people who elected you. And you have to have that in mind of the struggling small businesses, of these people who are struggling to make their mortgage, but they're still paying their property taxes and their excise taxes. That that's an important charge that you cannot lose sight of ever. And one of the most important things they need to do is seek out revenue streams. Whether, you know, it's obviously increased commercial developments, you know, on everybody's high point. But, you know, tourism, tourism, you know, took a huge hit because of COVID.
Right.
It's starting to come back. The last couple of nights that I've been about downtown, they actually had a concert last night downtown. It was great, people were out, they were moving around. It's starting to have the feel that it had pre-COVID. But it's going to take us a while to that. So while we're struggling, while all these people are struggling, we need to seek out other revenue streams. You know, the use of solar and hydro. I put up a post, the city of, not Portland's a great example, but the city of Portland had attached turbines to their water mains. And we're generating electricity because water flows through these pipes, whether you want it to or not. And so it's how I get my water, my condo. So if that one is chugging through the pipes anyway, why don't we attach a section to it with a turbine involved? And even if it's a small amount of electricity, you're creating some revenue or offsetting the town's bill to Eversource, or Nstar, or whoever we pay our electric to. And you're reducing that burden on the taxpayers. Because at the end of the day, that's really what you need to do. You need to be seeking out new and innovative ways to reduce the burden on the taxpayers. And if we can do it and make our environment and our planet a better place at the same time, then that's awesome. If we can build up carbon credits.
Right.
Because even when you build credit, you sell them back. And the electric company sells them, the corporation's offset their stuff. But that's another, you know, to make money for the town. And if we're lowering our electric bill, we're selling carbon credits, we're, you know, we're getting revenue from, you know, because like I said, what they do is they hire an outside billing firm, and the outside billing firm bills mass health, or Blue Cross, or whatever. And, you know, my numbers were based off of a bunch of towns that were a lot smaller. And I, you know, even by, I conservatively said $3 million, but, you know, I see it as being more than that.
Right.
And, you know, I wouldn't characterize that as a drop in the bucket if we're lowering our electric bill.
Yeah.
Making the world a better place, and we're, you know, bringing in that type of revenue to offset it. You'll never see nuclear plants.
Exactly. No, and I didn't mean that in a detrimental way at all, what you said. It's just, it's such, there's such, it's such a huge budget that, so your idea is more.
$261 million.
Yeah, targeted smaller items that can actually bring in millions of dollars each. And that all adds up. I hear what you're saying, exactly. So in the And I, I hear what you're saying exactly. So in the last.
Yeah, no, I wasn't, I wasn't taking issue with it.
Okay. In the last two minutes, um, you can just speak right to the, uh, to the public, to the voters and, um, ask them to vote for you and tell them why they should.
Thank you very much. And, and before we do that, I just want to say thank you to you and to PAC TV. And, and I think that what I've seen this year is, is a, a public that wants to know their candidate, a public that wants to be informed about the candidate, that wants to make very smart and, you know, and deliberate decisions. You know, I, I just want to speak to that right now. Um, everybody knows, you know, so far I think they figured out I'm Scott Becky, hence it's my name's in the corner of the Zoom thing. But, um, I'm asking for your vote. And as a retired Navy Sergeant of Marines, um, a disabled veteran of Fallujah, Iraq, a, an attorney, uh, was very fortunate. The VA sent me to law school. Um, I was admitted to practice before the United States Supreme Court in federal court, in the Massachusetts courts. As a police officer and a former corrections officer with twenty-nine years of public service and, and experience in public safety. And as a person who was born and raised in the town of Plymouth, again, I trace my roots all the way back to the Mayflower, um, and, you know, John Alden. And I have the institutional and historic knowledge of the workings of the town of Plymouth. So I have the leadership. I have the education. I have the experience as an elected official in the town of Plymouth. And that institutional and historic knowledge for me to be effective on day one with a charge that I'm here to frugally and cautiously spend those taxpayer dollars that the citizens have worked so hard. Um, that they want our leadership to be very cognizant of, of that we are responsible to them. And that that is our charge. And, and that if we are not responsible to them, that we should feel that again in the next election. And I'm asking for your vote on August fourteenth. I think it's a very important charge to take on to become a member of the Select Board. And I will do so in the best manner possible with the most altruistic reasons. That I love my town and I want to see my town as the best place that we could possibly make it, but we can only do this together. So far, what I've heard is that people want change. I'm asking you, on August, go to the polls and please help me be that change that our town needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, so much for participating today and best of luck to you out on the campaign trail. For our viewers, thank you for joining us. If you're interested in watching replays of this interview, please visit our website, pacTV.org/elections for replay times and online viewing options, including PAC TV's own on-demand streaming service, PAC TV Prime. And please make your choices heard by voting in the election on Saturday, August fourteenth. Thank you and good day.